So, welcome back to the Up Zone where understanding politics is made simple. We are trying something new today. We are trying this, um, this whole, I don't know, what do you guys call this? New setup. We got a new setup going on. Can you gentlemen here? Yeah, can y'all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, good deal. So, I am trying to make sure that everything is rolling, that we're live streaming on our social media. I can't tell if we are or aren't, but we're recording and so either way, this will get uploaded. How are you guys doing today?
Great.
Doing good.
Now, Mr. Floyd, we, we have the pleasure of having you technologically digitized in with us and you too, Mr., Mr. Monk. So, we're all, we're, we're here, we're here and we're doing it and we're gonna make ourselves, we're gonna make ourselves proud today. So, we got some gritty in the city and some water on the curb. What is the gritty in the city and the water on the curb today? I know we got a lot of House bills moving, a lot of Senate bills moving. We got a lot of action at the city. Where do you guys want to start? Ted, you, you, where do you want to take us this morning?
Um, well, it, it was funny, Derek Thompson, District Six, um, you know, asked again to go to, uh, four-year terms.
Okay.
And then, when Mario Benevente asked him, why not, you know, put it to the voters? And his, his answer was, because we don't have to. That's what Derek Thompson.
What? What?
The man is right. That's, I mean, he is right, he does not have to, but that's the wrong political move.
Yeah, I mean, he's only been there, what, seven months? They took August, oh, August of last year? And now he's telling, well, we don't have to put it to the voters like we did in 2018 because we don't have to. That was, and I, I went back and I, I list that again and I listened to it again. And so, Mario Benevente and, um, Kathy, you know, Kathy Johnson voted not to move forward with the city staff coming up with the, the timeline and setting up public hearings. So, we need to watch back.
So, what is, so what's, go ahead, Mr. Floyd.
In reference to that, Ted, it's the same old bottle plate message.
Yeah.
You know, with two years, Tish, we don't have time to accomplish our goals and objectives.
Right.
The US House is two years. You know, the North Carolina General Assembly is two years.
Right.
So, they call the same thing every time, we don't have time. Hope meal just changed their mind.
Yeah.
So, they did walk that back? They ended up removing that four years off the table?
Yeah.
I think that was smart because there was gonna be a lot of uproar about that. So, I think that was smart.
It was unanimous. They all said, nah, we're not gonna do this on our own. So, they might bring it back, you know, for a public vote, but, you know, they, they, they kicked off, they got rid of that Monday night.
Okay.
But I think that vote, Ted, that year that they, that, that it was, it came up, I think about sixty-five percent, you know, vote against extending the council term.
Right.
So, and I'm, Tish, now, now, I'm not talking about one percent, one, two percent.
Right, more than half of the population. Two thirds of the population.
We call that a, that, we call that a whooping, see? So, when you see that percentage, a wise person don't go down that path.
That's right. And I don't understand, Mr. Floyd, to be very frank with you, I don't understand why they keep trying to, and I mean, Thompson is new. He's the new kid on the block. I don't know, has he even brought any, has he brought anything forward in this, this beginning of their term? Even as a council member request? Like, if, if this is your first council member request, you missed the mark. You completely missed the mark because what, what is there to, first of all, what have you done to say, I need more time to see this through? Because typically, that's the argument. We've started this, we feel we need more time to see this through. Ted, I was reading something the other day about stormwater. I read an, it was on, um, LinkedIn. And they were talking about how the, the Council of 2019 was extremely, um, aggressive and, and made some real strides where stormwater is concerned. And you're still seeing the effects of that because of the watershed plan that we fully funded. That was done in a matter of, 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 it took months to get that done. It didn't take four years to get that done. And if you ha, if you are, if you have good leadership and you are a good planner and you have a good management team, what you put in place is going to, it's gonna roll. Like, they, they, the, the stormwater watershed plan is, it's gonna roll whether I'm there or not. I mean, and we were, we were instrumental in that, but it's going to roll whether we're there or not. So, that argument, that dog just don't hunt. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know.
Good on you.
Yeah, and, and they've only been together seven months now, so they really haven't done anything, you know, significant. It's, I mean, they're, they're still new, they're, you know, they're going through it. Um, they should be, um, getting into their budget pretty soon, you know? Um, and, you know, have a look at the, you know, the tax increase because of the bond referendum. And that's all they'll do. It'll be a future council that oversees all the.
All the bond projects.
Bond projects, yeah.
Right. Cause I didn't have anything to do with the bond referendum for Parks and Rec, but I had to take votes on all of that. And if you, if you want to be there to carry all that through, you need a ten-year term, which is completely unrealistic. Like, that's not gonna happen, come on now. And we're sick of, I mean, the, the, truth be told, if, all you have to do is just peruse Facebook, unfortunately, the vote doesn't reflect it. But the people are sick of the elected leaders that we have. So, why would we want to give them four years when we're sick of them a, after they get elected in three months?
Well, Tish, and man, Tish, let's be real, the man has a right to do it, I respect. And he lost six months because of the redistricting. So, he wants to make that six months up with four years. So, I mean, you know, I, I get a man accolades.
I give him accolades too, but where that, that dog don't hunt.
You gotta be brave after a sixty-five percent voter. I mean, your voter turn out there saying no, and you gonna bring it up. I mean, you got to be, to be a politician, you got to be smart and true.
And you gotta be able to count though. And Mr. Floyd, I think you make such a valid point about the sixty-five percent. But here's the question, who's got the key in Thompson's back? Because who is, who is hyping him up to say, we don't have to? Like, are you serious? We don't, we don't have to take it to the voters, this is our choice.
He said that he can bring his district up. Now, remember now, he said that he's from a district. He said he can bring his district to the council and that's, that's one district.
Well, again, I'll point to Facebook and I'll say, Facebook is not satisfied with their representation in District Six. I read a post from somebody yesterday and they were really laying in on the fact that they have felt underrepresented since Mr. Chris, you know, retired from, from representing them. And that's, that speaks volumes, they feel underrepresented. And I will say this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna flow right into the PWC conversation. I still question these votes that put Chris Davis in as chairperson for PWC. Because for so long, we couldn't get past, what, four votes, Ted? And then all of a sudden, we got, what, six votes? All of a sudden? Right, and so my question is, I, in, in my estimation, I'm a, I, I pay attention to people, y'all. And I know that Chris Davis, um, was, was a champion for Derek Thompson, that was his guy. He, cause he was running for a different office. But listen, when you don't have a job, taking your old job back looks pretty good to you. And so, because Chris Davis didn't have a job, had they not appointed him to the PWC Commission, and I said this a show or two ago, I believe he would have ran for council again, which would have pitted him against Derek Thompson. So, that's, that to me is a very clear definitive reason why I can see a motivating factor for Derek Thompson to vote for Chris Davis. There are other members of this council, y'all? I'm scratching my head and wondering, where'd that vote come from?
Tish, Tish and Ted, it was not a council agenda item. It was put, like I said to y'all last week, it was a circle. It, that, that's all that it was.
Yeah, the Ringland Brothers.
You had to have the eight votes. And so, once you got the eight vote, you know you gonna get the six because someone agreed to the eight vote. So, you know, and it was done, the rumor mill was that Chris goes to Raleigh. And we know, uh, uh, the support that he had when he was that person running for the state house. You know, our governor came down here twice, uh, well, twice for some fundraisers. And we know who, who was behind these fundraisers.
Well, I want, I'm gonna say the name because I know you won't. But Mitch, the, Mitch Colvin, the mayor of the city of Fayetteville, hosted fundraisers at his home whereby the governor was an, a guest. Not only was the governor a guest, but members of Bernhard Capital were also guests, as was Josh Stein, the Attorney General. So, these people were all guests at this fundraiser, which I mean, hey.
That's who they supported, that's who they, that's who it was supported, that it, but some kind of way, Ted, forgive me, Ted, y'all were, y'all supported, uh, Chris.
Ted just supported Chris?
You know, but it, but it sort of backed by, so that left Chris out. Okay, so the next rumor mill was that if you lose, we will get you on PWC. Okay, so, you, you know, that's how it happened. Read the tea leaves, I mean, you know.
People don't give you a job for no reason.
I know probably is out there, but look at the leaves when they come.
Now Ted, let's talk about PWC, what's going on over there?
Well, uh, Chris Davis took his oath of office yesterday morning. Uh, the mayor, uh, you know, gave the oath. Um, and, you know, PWC has been talking about raising the rates for a couple of months now. It's been, you know, publicized, they're not hiding it. And so, um, one of his first votes was to raise the rates. You know, I think that's just, you know, circumstance that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, so, um, and then typically, they rotate the, you know, like the board chairman, the treasurer, the secretary. They rotate every year. And I believe you told me that she's, Chris Davis is starting off as the treasurer.
Treasurer, mm-hmm, yeah, that's what was reported, yeah, that's what, that's what the report said, that he is the treasurer.
Yep, and so, what I, what I read about the rate, uh, increases, uh, got it right here, um, about thirteen dollars a month for a typical user. Now, we have super users and some are very conservative, so they just, you know, if you had to, it was like twelve dollars and ninety some cents. So, about thirteen dollars a month, uh, utility increase moving forward. And then probably another increase in about two years.
And that, and that thirteen dollars is gonna hit forty-three percent of the city's population. If you understand the numbers, Ted, that I just gave you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then you're talking about, on top of that, the, I, I hope going forward, the PWC does not be as general, generous to the city when the city, uh, may have a downfall in revenue if the Federal Reserve continue to raise rates.
Listen, you, did you say if the city has a, a downturn? Because I, I think the question is inevitable, Mr. Floyd. Ten million dollars missing from the county eventually, four million dollars requested back from PWC from, from the, the loan that was made to them. Then you're talking about an, and, uh, the, the bonds that are, that are happening. So, you're looking, and then increases in rates with PWC. Do, you said read the tea leaves, do the tea leaves say to y'all, a concession agreement is inevitable? That now the council has not only the votes at PWC, but also the, um, the outward facing appearance of a necessity for this major influx of cash at one time? Or do you think that the bond poked a hole in that?
Well, Tish, I'm just saying to you, as a ex-public person, sometime, you know, you, you really got to look at it, you can have an influx of money.
Mm-hmm.
You, you can have that, but at the same time, you can have the same influx of money over a period of time and still have your ownership. But Van Myer, now, as you go over all of these programs and projects, you can require some assistance and Ted, you know, from local government, you know, for approval for some of these things. And so, if you are so debt ridden, local government is not gonna approve or say that you don't have the resources to, to, to pay off these debts. And then, brother Ted, we gonna have to look at another source. And the only way we can get that source is to raise your taxes. And that's another political suicide. Y'all, they're talking about suicide issues today.
Well, and, um, you know, we, we have talked already about, uh, the, 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 the rising interest rates. And so, um, I sent a public records request to the city of Fayetteville.
I saw that.
And, yeah, and, uh, and I asked, hey, what was the rate that the city received for the last tranche of money for the Parks and Rec bond, um, money? And it was like, their last, uh, amount borrowed was like nineteen million dollars in May of last year. Um, and the interest rate was four point one three eight cents. And at that time, the Fed interest rate was one percent.
So, they, they borrowed at more than two, plus two?
Yeah, because I always believed two cents. Now, the Fed, you know, raised their interest rate two days later to like one point five percent. So, we're already at four point seven five. So, now, if they borrow at three percent over prime like that, then now you're up in the seven percent, going on eight percent. And the Fed is supposed to raise the interest rates two more times, uh, uh, be, before June, before the city does their budget. So, if city staff last, you know, summer, uh, estimated four point five cents for a borrowing rate, well, now we're, if we're, you know, prime plus two and a half or three, you're already up to seven percent, about to double.
Is it five point two five percent?
Okay, well, if it's already at five point two, then.
If they add three, we looking at eight point two.
Yeah, that's my, double, double what they projected less than a year ago.
Now, they have been raising it at two point five percent. My understanding now, looking at media source, that they gonna go now to a half percent.
I, I, I read that, did you?
Put it at five point, uh, five point seven five percent.
Mm-hmm, that could happen by June, yeah.
So, so you guys, for the purpose of the.
Get another rate increase before the end of the year.
Which is, this is, and this is, this is gonna hit the people. So, for, for the people who are listening to us, how, how, y'all, how is this gonna affect, how does this touch our pockets?
Well.
I mean, it's more than only.
Well, the city council, the voter said, you can borrow up to ninety-seven million. The city council does not have to borrow that much.
Ted, let's be realistic, do you think that they're not going to?
Well, I'm, I'm pressuring them, you know, behind the scenes.
Right.
That you told us, the citizens, that it would be about four cents on the tax rate. Okay, now we know that's no longer true. So, the city council could direct, which they didn't even ask the question Monday night during the bond presentations, all three. Um, and I had texted three of them saying, hey, ask the question, what is the current, um, you know, tax increase? You know, interest rate and, you, you know, uh, and not one of them asked that question. So, they let city staff talk, and the city staff does a great job like they always do. So, so, city council could, which I doubt they will, they could direct the city manager or the city staff to, we will raise the property tax four cents like we told them that last summer. Um, and then, city staff, you figure out how much we can borrow at only a four cent tax increase? And so, we, it, it might drop down so they can only borrow sixty million?
Okay.
Million? And then, you, uh, pick the projects within the three bond.
Within that.
Within those three to, uh, you know, uh, ba, basic view, live within the four, four cent tax increase.
Do what the rest of us have to do and live within your means, right?
Right, right, right.
Right, spend according to your, to your means. But now Ted, that.
Yeah, like Mr. Floyd said, we got nineteen percent of Fayetteville's population living in poverty. So, here we have council members, you know, trying to do, you know, things for homes and this and renters and, and now you, you raise the property tax on everybody, including, you know, struggling businesses. And you're hurting the very people that you're having other programs trying to help. So, it, they're, they're, it's not lining up, it's not, in my mind, it's not lining up.
Tish and Ted, you know, they, you know, if I can carry you back to the Federal Reserve with this raising of the interest rate, what they are looking at is slowing down the economy. So, if they slow down the, the economy and slow down the borrowing power, that means that we are going to have an increase in unemployment. And unemployment means that industry, I mean, with the increase, industries are go, is going to begin to cut back and going to begin to lay off. So, if they lay off, then the revenue that you are receiving now withdraw.
Mm-hmm.
So, so all these things, you, you know, need to be, uh, uh, factored in. And now, on the other hand, the county wanted to look at this convention center, they also wanted to look at a school, uh, uh, Ted, and that's a hundred million dollars. And they came back, uh, last week with the board, well, this week with the, with the county board of commissioners, it jumped up fifty percent.
Yeah, like the hunky.
To a hundred and sixty-eight million.
Yeah.
God, I mean, what is, I mean, what they gonna have, uh, everything gonna be computerized, everything, you know?
Yeah.
You know, so, where's all this money gonna come from? Now, the county has the responsibility to build schools, that's the county responsibility, not the state. So, where this money is gonna come from? Uh, the, the county, uh, also talking about partnering with Fort Bragg. But if you gonna build a hundred and sixty-eight million dollar school, I hope you have some economic development around it.
And you know, Mr. Floyd, I want us to touch on that because I, I think, you know, I, I live off of the Merkison Road corridor. And I happen to live on the more northern end of the Merkison Road corridor where there's, uh, it's a little bit more industrial, there's not as much conversation about what's gonna be done. And that was one of the things I was really pushing for, was for this end to not be forgotten about when we talk about the, the transformation of this corridor. Because we are the gateway to Fort Bragg. With, and we are the entry point to Shaw Heights, which is the biggest flub that we've had as far as donut holes in a very long time. And I know that, um, Kathy Jensen regularly says that her, her district has more donut holes than any other district. But I believe that the donut hole in Shaw Heights is the most critical donut hole that we have based upon economic development and, and, and the needs of that area. And y'all, when I tell you, it blew my mind when I read an article recently that was talking about the fact that they are now considering relo, because at one point, they were talking about relocating the, um, the, uh, high school to this end of Merkison Road, right? Now, they're talking about relocating it where, Mr. Floyd?
On Honeycutt, I mean, what I'm saying, if you look at Honeycutt and if you look at J, I mean, WT Brown, at three thirty, that school, whatever time school close, it shuts down. There's nothing that's at that school after the school shuts down.
Right.
But if you gonna invest that kind of money, public sector should jumpstart economic development. But you are not jumpstarting economic development if you put it on Fort Bragg. Now, I'm an ex-military person, okay? But it has no purpose and serves no purpose.
And, and Mr. Floyd, and the crazy part is, Fort Bragg, what, they, they went, there was a, a listening tour apparently, and Fort Bragg said, we have no intentions of building a high school on Fort Bragg. And then I turned around and hear this information about that Honeycutt area. And the saddest thing of all of it, when I hear that, not just the fact that it, it, it diminishes the work that's being done along the Merkison Road corridor. It decreases the impact of all of the other economic development projects because this was a part of that, that process. But it also, if you are familiar with WT Brown, that school is under, when, when you look at the, the, the numbers of students that are in that school, it is probably one of the emptiest schools in the county by way of elementary schools.
If I may, Tish, how can you transfer a school?
A whole school into another school?
Without doing any physical adjustments.
Right, cause when they closed that, that school down for having rats and roaches in it, they moved all those kids over to WT Brown. And if you, and I did, I went over to WT Brown and I took a look to see what, cause I had a girlfriend who was, who was moved. So, I went and took a look and they still had space in the classroom. So, that lets you know, these, it's, it's, you, you gonna build something for who to go? Who's gonna go? Just for Fort Bragg?
The county has already made a commitment to build, I think it's forty-eight units or forty-eight million dollars in housing and twelve million dollars for, uh, water and sewer, what sewer, water and sewer, you know, in the Shaw Heights area. So, the county is already making a present in Shaw, projected by, already in Shaw Heights. So, why would you want to spend, now, using two figures that Tish and Ted, a hundred million dollars, or a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars?
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, there's no connection. So, why would you want to do that? And then, plus, you talk about a fifty-year lease. When do the fifty years start? Does the fifty years start once the lease is signed? And then you got three to four years worth of construction project. So, you only have forty-seven years of lease.
Right.
Come on, let's be real.
And I love partnering with Fort Bragg. I think Fort Bragg is, is the biggest economic engine in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I do believe, however, that we have to be wise in how we go about doing that. And I, I think that people from the base would bring their kids to school right here on the northern end of Merkison Road quicker than they'll take them down over there off Jasper Street to the current E.E. Smith. Cause that's the problem, let's just be real. The issue with the current location of E.E. Smith is that the parents on Fort Bragg, when you process into Fort Bragg, you are told that there are certain areas in this city that you need to avoid and stay away from. And Jasper Street happens to be one of those areas. So, you tell people, y'all don't go down there because it might not be safe. But then you tell them, but your kids gotta go to school over there.
Well, Tish, we look at, you know, one thing that we talking about, and I'll take, and coming right back, we talked about parents. That's why I said to y'all before, in order to address crime, you got to address parents and kids, I mean, parents. And that come from code enforcement. You need to, you know, you need to, uh, to look at that. Now, back to Shaw Heights, now Shaw Heights, the beautiful part of Shaw Heights, you have Bragg Blah 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 ramp off two ninety-five and you have Merkison Road ramp off two ninety-five.
And you have All-American running through it.
It, you're a perfect economic development. So, why would you want to even consider? I mean, it's a good option now. I mean, but on the other hand, if you ride down Shaw Road, you'll see some beautiful signs that say, PWC on the fence.
Yep.
It simply mean that that land is owned by PWC.
Absolutely, absolutely.
A public entity.
Absolutely.
So, you already have the land, you can condemn the land or you can get the land from PWC.
Absolutely.
As a watershed. Now, but, but developers can build you whatever you want to, they have built anywhere you want to build it.
Yep, well, guys, let's take a sixty-second pause. When we come back, let's talk about some of those bills that have been filed. Let's also talk about, um, there was something else you just said that made me think about it. Eh, it'll come back to me. Um, but let's, let's take a quick pause and then Ted, we're gonna go through your list and we'll hit on a couple more things when we get back. Do not go away, you guys, do not go away. We'll be right back. Hey, gentlemen, if you wanna mute or turn your camera off, you're welcome to, you got sixty seconds. We'll be right back.
Are you looking for a real estate agent who knows the Fayetteville community inside and out? Look no further, as your hometown girl, Latonya, has extensive experience of our area and experience in its real estate market. Latonya delivers results. At LMR Realty Group, we all understand that buying or selling a home can be a stressful experience. When you partner with us, you control the decisions while LMR Realty Group guides the process. And together, we'll work from contract to close with ease. Whether you're a first-time buyer, downsizing, or expanding your investment portfolio, LMR Realty Group has got you covered. As a bonus, if you call and go under contract by March thirty-first, LMR Realty Group can cover up to four hundred dollars for a home warranty on a resold property with all appliances included. Some exclusions apply. Don't wait, call nine one zero five seven four eight two two five, or visit E.L.L.I.M.A.R. Realty Group dot com to get you started. Or visit E L L I M A R Realty Group dot com to get you started. Let's make your dream home a reality with L M R Realty Group.
Okay, so we are back with the gritty in the city and the word on the curb. You guys, because this is new, could you guys hear that?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Um, so listen, I know that we, we saw some bills that were, were floated around. One of them really piqued my interest, and it was the bill that is sponsored by, um, Senator Applewhite. And it's with the, the restrictions on guns. Um, Ted, you looked that up. What did you, what did you make of that when you looked at it?
Um, I'm looking at it right now, and it's called, um, Gun Violence Protection Act. And the, the, the lead-in is, oh my goodness, it's, it's like, um, twenty-five lines of writing, you know, it's about, uh, assault rifle, long rifles, the seventy-two hour waiting period before purchase. Uh, persons under a certain age prohibit possession of bunk, bunk, bunk stock, trigger crank. Save, or require safety storage, you know, firearm, uh, revise, revise rap, r- r- reciprocity. Law for concealed per, permit, permits. Um, you'll carry liability insurance, limit the size of ammunition, mag, magazines. Repeal the preemption of lock, local regular, uh, local regu, regulations. Allow destruction of sea, you know, seized firearms. Now, that I agree with, you know, like the city, you know, when they get, uh, our firearms turned into them, they can't destroy them. So I, I, I agree with, yeah, let, let, let the law, law enforcement destroy them if they don't have any need for them. Uh, you know, public safety, develop a roster of hun, handguns that meet certain design and safety standards. And prohibit the sale, transfer, ownership, or possession of handguns that are not included on the roster. I mean, this bill is going nowhere with the. Sponsors are all Democrat, uh, Harrison, Maury, Autry, and Price. And Mr. Floyd, you might know some of those people. So you, you know more, more than I about what happens to bills like this.
Question to you, Mr. Ted, if I may please.
Yes, sir.
You know, uh, it, it sounds like, uh, you know, it's a companion bill. But my question to you, where is those, I mean, those two bills in the Senate side, I know you have, you may not be able to tell me. Where, what committees are they assigned to?
Um, matter of fact, this one was just, it was, uh, addition one. And for the House bill, it, it is a companion bill, they both House and Senate. It passed the first reading, um, in the House yesterday. And it was referred to the Committee on Rules, Calendar, and Operations of the House.
Well, Mr. Ted.
Yes, sir.
That's where it will rest.
But it is a way for somebody to come back into their community and say, I fought for this and it couldn't move.
Well, uh, you know, like I said, now read the tea leaves again now, once all this parlor. You know, and you'll see it will not get any traction.
Absolutely. Which, what else you got, Ted, besides this, this, this bill that's not going anywhere?
Yesterday, one of the House committees, uh, I mean, the Senate committees, took up House Bill forty. Which was the bill about violent riots, you know, not peaceful riots or protests. Um, and they, I, I listened to that committee. And they talked about, you know, those people that, you know, throw the rocks, you'll, you'll break windows. You'll, uh, damage, you know, police cars. But it has nothing to do supposedly, you know, with those people who are, you know, in the street, but not actually committing the violent acts. And so it's already passed.
Such a slippery slide, Ted.
It's, yeah, but, um.
Such a slippery slide. And I've said this before, Mr. Floyd and Ted, you know, we are a nation that is founded on, on a disruption of government. We are a nation that is founded on a violent overthrow of their government. And to start creating rules, and there was a reason for that, there was a reason for that overthrow. And to start creating these rules and regulations that scare people into submission where their government is concerned. That is, that's a slippery, slippery slope.
Thank you, Teesh. Do you think the bill gonna pass in Senate?
Well, here's, here's what I'll say. I will say that I believe that this is one of those instances where government likes to retain power. And I think that this is about, this is a power move. This is not just a punitive punishment thing. I think this is a power move. I don't know if it will pass the way it is presented, but I most certainly think that.
It cleared the House now.
Uh, it, it, yes.
It had by Democrats on it, I believe.
Yeah, um, yep, it, it was, uh, bipartisan, and there was some bipartisan.
Maintain power.
Yeah, there was some bipartisan support during the, um, um, committee, Senate committee. So when I looked on what the city senate has to vote for today at eleven o'clock. Um, it is the second reading of House Bill forty, prevent rioting and civil disorder, second edition. So it's already cleared the Senate committee, and I'm looking at it here, it's on the calendar. If, if, you know, if they convene on time.
For a second reading. I would rename that bill, if I were renaming that, I'd rename that maintain power and prevent people from feeling like they can uprise against government, because that's what that is.
Thank you for your opinion, Teesh, but it's gonna pay.
Yeah, and that's what, and that's exactly, I agree, I agree. And that's, and I think that that's why it's gonna pass. Because our government is more con, more concerned about maintaining their, their position.
So the question becomes, when it passes the Senate today, and it's sent to the governor. Is he, he does have the option to veto it or not? Is that true, Mr. Floyd?
He does, but remember that Ted now, it passed bipartisan in the House. And the Republican only need one vote in the House, and they had the veto override in the Senate.
Okay.
So, Teesh, I'm sorry to disagree with you today, and I hope we maintain our friendship.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, but do you guys see this also? Am I the only one that feels like when we start making it, just like when we made the legislation to prevent people from camping out at the market house? I just feel like we are going in the wrong direction with the rules we're making.
Well, you know, we made it, but, 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 you know, we, we make a lot of rules, but the thing about it. And, and the police department and the law enforcement also ask, can we enforce it? We don't have the staff to enforce it, but make it, that's all right to make it, but we don't have the staff to enforce it.
And sometimes enforcement is not always equitable. Sometimes it's not always, we enforce with this group, but we don't enforce with this group. And I think that's where you get into those, those issues, though.
Yeah, and wha, what I thought was interesting during the committee meeting. Um, there's, if you get arrested for, for an act of violence, you know, during a protest or a riot. Um, you're put on a twenty-four hour hold, which means you're gonna stay, you know, in custody overnight. Um, and one of the, the ladies asked, what other laws do we have in North Carolina where there's a hold on the person? And the only answer they had was domestic violence. So like if, um, one of us are, you know, arrested for domestic violence. We're gonna stay in custody for twenty-four hours, and they call it a cooldown period. Instead of just, you know, getting bonded out in two hours and then you're right back.
That's problematic, because now you give the government legal right to be able to arrest you just because you are at a protest. That's problematic.
Yeah, no, they, they were good to say, you could be at that protest, you just can't.
Get arrested.
You get arrested if you are physically seen, you know, breaking a window. Burning a car, you know, and any act of violence. But, uh, it's, and it says that those people that are just watching, they cannot get arrested. It's just the ones that the police identify, you know, they see it happen, they're doing violence, then they can go after those.
I don't like it, Ted. I don't like it. I don't like it.
Ted, you're getting it, Ted. I, I, I mean, you know, I understand, you know, your thought, but reality is that it's gonna pay.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And that's an unfortunate reality. That's unfortunate. Yep.
Now, it goes back, Ted, you mentioned that deal, but the county met with the delegation uh, some time back and asked for assistance in building, uh, a high school.
Yeah, E E Smith.
Yeah, I looked at the Education Committee, Kate Whale, and I didn't see a bill from though two of our representatives, Lucas and Representative Wheatley, serves on education.
Isn't Wheatley the chairperson for that one?
No, she's on the committee.
Okay.
She's on the committee. Uh, the, 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 those should be the only two. I mean, it would help if it came from those two because they are on education. And that bill had to be into, requested by, I think it's March the third, and had to be introduced by the twenty-third. So there's a little time there for that, uh, assistance for the county, uh, building Smith. But please bear in mind now, it's the county responsibility to build a school, not the state. But your representative and senator can negotiate for some assistance. You know, and happen to county, Bill Smith. But I just don't see a representative or senator prepared to do that at this time.
Right.
Yeah, and, uh, you, you're right, Mr. Floyd, the, um, the local bills, um, have to be filed, um, by the twenty-third of this month. So if they don't file a bill for the hundred million, like you, you mentioned, by the twenty-third of this month. Then, um, it's not gonna happen this year, uh, the, based on what I'm.
And there's a possibility now, there's a lot of strings that can be attached. You know, when you go into appropriation and negotiation and trying to leverage your vote. But I just don't see it at this particular, uh, uh, point in time. But the county did make a good request now.
Yeah. But I, I got something funny that has nothing to do with local politics.
What you got, Ted?
Um, Jill Biden, President's wife. Uh, gives a biological male from Argentina an award for women on International Women's Day. I just thought that was funny.
It's funny, but not.
We'll leave that there, Ted, but if we can, before we close, if we can go back to the Anne Street landfill.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, you know, I, I, I would just like to, uh, just talk about that, but Teesh, she moved away.
I think she's on grandma duty.
You got it, Ted. You got it.
I said about, about the landfill, and Ted talked about it, uh, last week, about the railroad track. I, you know, to just refresh, I went back over there, and Ted is right, there's a railroad track. That's one divided zone, okay? And then on the other side of the railroad track, there's a block company.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, with another environmental, because they had this discussion years back about the dust coming from, uh, the black, uh, block company.
Oh, yeah.
And then there's another service line coming out of Raleigh that's feeding, uh, you know, that's coming across Ramsey Street. Now, but if we go back, Teesh and Ted, if we look at it, uh, and if the, the county is successful in moving west. That is gonna be the future area for landfill.
Period.
Right.
In the mid-twenty to fifty years. You're not gonna buy, you're not gonna buy a house in your landfill. You know, so that is prone to be a area where the landfill is gonna grow and grow and grow.
Yeah.
And on the other side of that, a service railroad track, that's where P W C Water Plant is. And then there's a Texas Fire Plant over there that, that we use to, uh, uh, appropriate money because it has environmental issues.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think that is, uh, I think that, and I mentioned when I went to the county that day, is that what is your plan B? Well, all I was talking about, this is the best plan.
They don't have a plan B.
Yeah, if we, what they're trying to do is they never mind the community, this is cheaper. They are poor, they are not gonna fight, let's dump it here.
Yep, yep. And that's, and that's the sad, but that's the sad reality of what happens to people who are in poverty. If you are not wealthy, and I, and when I say in poverty, I don't just mean you just destitute poor. But I mean, when you don't have enough money to be able to just uproot and, and move and be able to relocate, this is what happens.
What, what, Teesh, when you look at it, that area, it, they're already, and I think if you follow the streets, uh, over there, they're already there. And so when you keep approaching, you're gonna make that whole area a landfill area for the people.
And they won't give them enough money to be able to upgrade their quality of life. They won't give them, they'll, they'll take away their home. And they will not give them, you, you never get enough for, for your home. And these are people's memories, these are things that they've worked hard for. This is their, their residence, and, and we are getting ready to encroach with garbage.
Mm-hmm.
Now, one thing that, two, two persons that can help a city in a negative way. That's the Department of Transportation, okay? And if you see the municipalities who want to grow in what we call environmental racism areas, okay? Department of Transportation will put the road within twenty feet of your house. Therefore, the city loses a tax fact, because the only thing gonna be there is land. So the land might be.
And you're not taxing, right, you taxing that for a little bit, not the same as if there's a, a structure on that land. That's right, that's right.
Losing, so Department of Transportation is really one of those agencies that cause you to lose property value. And the other way, municipality does the same, you know.
Yeah, because I remember when they came through with two ninety-five, we saw whole houses getting wiped off. They, look, gone, gone. Take this little piece of change and go on about your business.
That's fantastic.
Yep, that, that happened several years ago out here in Western Fayetteville, you know, as they continue, uh, mov, moving. Um, I guess that would be south from Rayford Road. Some, some, some friends that were part of our Cumberland County Citizens United Group, uh, years ago. Um, their homes got bought out and they're gone. They're already demolished out here by New Century School or Elementary and, uh, Liverpool. Uh, several homes out there have been bought and demolished already for two ninety-five.
But Ted, now, was those homes that were bought, were they million-dollar homes?
Oh, no, uh, you, you know, two hundred, two hundred grand or less, for sure.
You see my point, Ted?
Yeah.
Now, they're not going to go and, and, uh.
Knock down the million-dollar houses.
Yeah, and cut a road through there, they're not gonna do that. You got two hundred houses out there worth a million-plus dollars, that's two hundred million dollars in property that you had to buy before you even put the road. But it's much better now than it was in the past, Teesh. Because a person or the Department of Transportation, uh, can have an idea about where they want to put a road. And it would stop economic development before the road even get built. Because that person cannot expand his or her home or make an improvement. Because a person had an idea about road improvement. So, you know, we, 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 okay, Teesh, that's yours?
This, this is my extra. He said, he said, Mr. Floyd, he's telling me I've been patient for a whole hour, honey, and now it's time for me to watch a movie. Give me, give me just a moment. But listen, gentlemen, I do wanna, I wanna say this before we close. I wanna say that we need to challenge our listeners to stay engaged. Because a lot of the things that we're talking about would not be able to fly so easily if they were engaged. There are people that have no idea what's going on, on at the house level. Um, Mr. Floyd, tell them how they can keep up with what's going on at the house level.
Well, you just go to the general, North Carolina General Assembly, and it has a whole caveat there. That if you want to know, look at diverse committees, the members, the bills. And the key thing of it is, read the introduction of the bill, the number, and then go, because if it's in blue. Which has a number, you can then read the bill, see where the bill is, and, uh, you know, signed to what committee. If a bill signed to four committees, you know, you wear your dark suits, okay?
And then as for, as for the county, Ted, how can people stay involved with what's going on at the county level? And then as for, as for the county, Ted, how can people stand up with what's going on at the county level?
Um, you know, they, they've got a webpage, just like the city, uh, and their meetings are broadcast on Channel Five. Um, and they're also archived on the county's website. So you can, you know, download the agendas. Uh, the minutes, you could go to the, their YouTube channel. And re-watch some of their meetings, just like the city council meetings. And so, you know, not everybody, you know, can be at the county courthouse at nine o'clock for their one meeting. You know, or seven P M for their other meeting. Um, but you can go back, uh. You'll look up the agendas and then if you really wanna, you could, you could sit there and go to YouTube and you'll watch what happened, you know, during their meetings. Same, same.
Same thing for the city, right? Same thing for the city. So there's no reas- there's really no reason not to, not to know what's going on.
Right.
And ten committee meetings, uh, 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 Tish, we should participate as many meetings as possible.
Absolutely.
Making a job now, but attend as many meetings as possible, so you can stay informed.
Of what's going on.
You know, a politician or some of them are good car salesmen too, Tish.
And Mr. Floyd, and that, that's the part I want people to really understand, is you cannot rely on your representative to bring you back quality information.
Yeah.
That's all I got. That's all I got, Mr. Floyd, what you wanna?
So much good and the worst of us is so much bad and the best of us, they lose none of us to talk about the rest of us. But please pay attention to your elected officials.
Absolutely. And I wanna tell y'all family first. That's why this little boy is here right now, family first. Because if you take care of your own, you won't, I'mma do it, hold on. If you take care of your own, you won't have to worry about the government taking care of them. Listen, listen, y'all, my, my, hold on, baby, hold on. My mother will be back. She's on vacation. See, these are her days to have him, but she's on vacation. So he's with honey today, but you are going to your nana on next Thursday and we will have, have no interruptions during our next recording. Ted, you go ahead and close us out so I can get him quiet.
Yeah, yeah, um, next Tuesday, twelve forty-five, um, in the afternoon. The North Carolina Supreme Court is rehearing the Harper versus Hall case, which was the redistricting case. So that's gonna be.
Oh, that's gonna be good.
Yeah, uh, so next Tuesday, uh, and you can go to the North Carolina Supreme Court website. And they have a, a calendar, you look on it, and then there's a link to where you can watch it live. Uh, so that's next Tuesday at twelve forty-five, redistricting in North Carolina is back before the North Carolina Supreme Court.
They, are they just looking at the Ted, is, is that the U S House and the Senate?
Um, right, um, well, the legislative defendants, they want the opportunity to redo all three maps. Um, uh, but we know, yeah, we, we know the congressional is gonna be done. And um, the, the plaintiffs in their, um, you know, their argument that was just uh uploaded last Friday. Um, they're, in their closing, it says that the North Carolina General Assembly. If the North Carolina Supreme Court, you know, overturns the precedent, or you know, the, the previous re- uh, uh rulings. That they should have to use the maps, the three maps that they passed in November of twenty twenty-one. And then that they should not, you know, have the opportunity to start over from scratch. Um, and I mean, those three maps from November is what caused the, you know, all, all the litigation all, all through last year. So uh, it'll be interesting to see how those arguments come out on Tuesday.
So you'll keep us posted, Ted. You're gonna stay on top of that and keep us posted.
Yeah, I, I, I'll watch it uh Tuesday.
Perfect. Well, y'all, I want everybody to keep your eyes on the, on the utility. I'mma keep telling you, watch the utility. And gentlemen, if there's nothing else, that's the gritty in the city and the world on the curb.
All right.
So we will catch you next week. This will be uploaded to our Facebook page, our YouTube page, and all of our other pages. And um, we look forward to, next week it'll get better and better.